This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. You'll see some new board members here tonight, and this will be my first full Village Board meeting as president. The new trustees and I were sworn in at our last meeting, which was held outdoors at Village Hall, a Village First. It was great to see everybody in person, and I know we all look forward to meeting in person again soon. Our village manager, Mike Brayman, will provide an update on our plan going forward a little bit later in the meeting. I'm gonna have to start our meeting with a statement that is difficult to make, and it's hard to have to start my first meeting with this, but it's very important that our community knows this. This is a statement that will be published on our social media tonight and will be published on our communication channels. We were made aware of an anti-Semitic display today, and I think it's important that the village talk to the community about this right now. Here I go. "The village is aware that a resident has placed an anti-Semitic display in a window of a private residence that is visible to the general public. The village is disturbed by the offensive imagery and strongly denounces this display. Although highly offensive, this display specifically cannot be regulated or removed by the village just because we do not like the message. This individual is entitled to their First Amendment rights under the United States Constitution. We cannot disagree strongly enough with this individual's actions. However, we must and will abide by the First Amendment, the bedrock principle that entitles all of us to freedom of speech, no matter how disturbing or objectionable the display. We do want to be abundantly clear. Wilmette rejects speech that promotes hate for any group of people based on their religion, race, ethnicity, or sexual orientation. Notwithstanding the above, the village takes this matter extremely seriously and will conduct a full investigation to determine if there is any criminal liability and cause of action for the village to take. As a village, we work every day to cultivate an environment where people of all religious backgrounds feel safe and respected within their own community. We encourage you to join the village's Human Relations Commission as it holds its first community meet and greet session on Saturday, June 12th, starting at 9:30 a.m. The meet and greet will take place in front of Village Hall outside. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and discuss diversity, equity, and inclusion in the village. And finally, this incident gives us the opportunity to educate the public about our historical atrocities and discuss the harm that displays like this have on our residents. For more information on the Holocaust and the history of antisemitism, please take the opportunity to visit the Illinois Holocaust Museum and Education Center's website, www.illholocaustmuseum.com." And now we'll start our regular meeting by asking the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Jaya.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Shepherd.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Barrow.
Here.
And President Plunkett.
Here. Thank you. We are all here. We have a quorum. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams software. I would now ask Peter Skiles, our Director of Administrative Services, to explain some of the logistics to members of the public joining us tonight.
Thank you, President Plunkett. Okay, so everybody will have started the meeting tonight, or very shortly will be muted. And when President Plunkett calls for public comment, those of you joining us with the Microsoft Teams client can toggle your mute status by pressing the microphone icon on the meeting toolbar. On the software that you join the meeting with, it may be up near the top right of your screen or possibly down towards the bottom center. And those joining by audio conference dial-in can toggle their mute status by pressing star six. That's both to turn your mute on and off. Only attendees can unmute themselves, so please note that no one else can help you and unmute you. You've got to unmute yourself. And just a reminder that if you're having technical difficulties providing your public comment tonight, you can type it in over in the YouTube livestream channel, and then one of us will read your comments back into the public record here. Thank you.
For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a gubernatorial disaster proclamation, which was issued by the Governor Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person village governmental meetings have been canceled. We will be discussing when returning in person shortly. However, the state has amended the Open Meetings Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Village Board during a gubernatorial disaster proclamation. We're conducting our business tonight in compliance with the new provisions of state law. As usual, this, well, not as usual, this meeting is being livestreamed and on our youtube.com channel. A recording of the meeting will be archived on the village's YouTube website, as we do with all of other televised meetings. A remote meeting obviously requires a different mechanic for public participation. So to ensure our residents and business owners and other interested parties have the opportunity to participate, we've solicited public comment prior to the start of the meeting via email. If you sent an email to publiccomment@wilmette.com, your email has been provided to the board members, and it will be included in the minutes of the meeting, but it will not be read aloud. Members of the public who are watching the broadcast can participate during our designated public comment periods by submitting comments through the YouTube Live chat feature. A member of the village staff will read your comment to the board. For those of you who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or the telephone, I see some of you here already, I will ask people to speak up if they'd like to make a public comment. I'll first ask them to identify themselves, and then I'll make a list. For people speaking during public comment, they will be allotted three minutes to address the board, just as they would if they were in an in-person meeting. All comments from the public will be recorded into the meeting minutes. Everybody, I muted everybody for our sound quality, so if you do speak, make sure to unmute yourself. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials. These materials are also posted on wilmette.com on the Friday before our meeting, so residents and other interested parties can review the same materials that the board members receive. The next item on our agenda, then, is public comment. Just as at an in-person meeting, all individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the board on an item which is not already on the agenda. Public comments, which were submitted by email, have been provided to the board and are part of the public record, but will not be read during the meeting. I will now ask people who are watching on YouTube Live to submit comments for the village staff to read. You can find the chat window to the right of the YouTube Live video window. And as they were typing, I will ask if there are individuals who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or the telephone who would like to address the board. Please identify yourselves now, and we'll make a list.
Hello, Mark Wiremueller here. Can you put me on the list?
Sure thing.
Annabelle Miller and Catherine Richards would like to be on the list.
Thank you. Mr. Artiega, anyone through YouTube Live would like to speak?
Not currently, no.
Okay. All right, Mark, Mr. Wiremueller, your three minutes are yours.
Okay, sound check. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna start. So, okay, this is Mark Wiremueller, Wilmette resident, taxpayer advocate. You can follow me on the Wilmette Connection page on Facebook. I'm also on Twitter and Instagram. So a lot of people in Wilmette have been in communication with me and asked me to speak about things, so that's what I'm doing tonight. I'm actually at the Village Hall right now, and I'm showing one of my issues is that we should be doing in-person meetings. There's no disaster out here. People are at the restaurants. Things are happening here, and so that's one of my issues. Other boards across Illinois are meeting in person, especially school boards, so I'll get to that on my other four quick issues here. Also, they used to do the Pledge of Allegiance before the meetings. I'm not sure why we can't do that on Zoom. Maybe you want to do that later in the meeting, but I've always liked the Pledge of Allegiance, and I miss that. So my four points here, it was very hard to log in. This is the fourth time I've spoken at a meeting on this Teams Act. I've talked to other people that are not as tech savvy as I am. Actually, I'm not. My kids helped me with this. So it's just very hard to log in. We gotta get back to in-person meetings. If we expect kids to be in in-person school, why can't the village board meet in person? We can meet out here. We can meet out here at the picnic tables or something. We could do six-foot distance. We could wear masks, have vaccines. We could do all kinds of things, but that's my suggestion. Okay, next point. Six years ago, I spoke about the village board, about Baker Square closing, because they spent a lot of time and money trying to double their property taxes. What I see is there's some good news is that the Caddyshack Restaurant might go in there. Bill Murray's Restaurant, based on the movie. So if they can go in there, but Baker Square's been very close to my heart for years, and they doubled their property taxes. The village actually hired attorneys to fight their appeal. So that's just something in the history of Wilmette I was not happy about. So I look forward to the Caddyshack opening. Hopefully, you guys will fast-track there whatever they want to do, because we need a restaurant over there. Jobs, commerce, it'll be great. There's one out, I think in Schaumburg I've been to. No, it's out in Rosemont. It's very nice. Okay, the road construction is taking forever here. I just, it seems like you guys should finish it up. It's been, the president said four weeks ago, is that lightning pace? I've talked to a number of people. They say it's at a snail's pace. A turtle could do a better job. It's almost done. It'd be nice if they could come out and just get rid of these barricades and finish it up this week. Okay, next issue is the liquor licenses. I've asked if they could go from 10:00 p.m. to midnight. You cannot buy beer after 10:05 in Wilmette. You can buy a cocktail over at Valley Lodge across the street to go up till 11:00 or 12:00, but you can't buy that. So that's been an issue I've been talking about. Lastly, I would ask from the consent agenda that the emergency, I guess you're gonna vote to extend the emergency, the disaster, and that's on the consent agenda. So I would ask that they remove that from the consent agenda and have some discussion about that tonight, because there's no emergency out here. We have to set the tone that we're ready to reopen, and we're ready to get people to come to Wilmette, and we want jobs, commerce, and we want people here, and there's no disaster. So if you can remove that from the consent agenda, and I guess that's it. Is my three minutes up?
I believe so.
It is.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll mute myself, and I'll listen to see if you want to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiremueller. Just briefly, Mr. Brayman will be discussing our plan for in-person meetings. We will also be having a very exciting economic development update tonight, so I'm looking forward to that. And our downtown, the construction is working well. I saw plantings today. It is beautiful, and I believe we're on schedule and on time, and it should be substantially completed by the end of June, and I know we can't wait. So thank you. Ms. Miller and Ms. Richards, I know you would like to speak.
Yes. Well, first of all, good evening. Thank you to the board and to President Plunkett for having us. My name is Catherine Richards, and this is Annabelle Miller, and we're students at Nutria High School. We're co-founders of a local group called Students Demand Action, which works for common sense gun laws and gun violence prevention. We're so grateful for the opportunity to speak with you all today, and we hope that you all continue to support policies that prevent gun violence in our communities.
So today, we're speaking on behalf of National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is a day that is dedicated to honoring and remembering all the victims and survivors of gun violence in our country. Every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 230 are shot and wounded. Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than other high-income countries. Illinois specifically has 1,400 gun deaths every year, and gun deaths have increased 32% in our state in the last decade compared to an 18% increase nationwide. Additionally, black people in Illinois are 34 times more likely to die by gun homicide than white Illinoisans.
We think it's especially important this year to take note of the gun violence that has been exacerbated in communities that have been hit hardest by COVID-19. Black and Latino communities have endured the worst of the pandemic and have seen a great increase in gun violence in their neighborhoods. Both COVID-19 and excessive gun violence can be traced back to root problems like income and housing inequality, and these communities have suffered greatly because of them. Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities have experienced increased violence as well, a violence enabled by guns. Gun sales themselves have increased as the pandemic has gone on, too. Gun sales in 2020 increased by 64% when compared with the numbers of 2019, and there were 2.1 million guns sold just in January 2021. This has pushed the background check system into overdrive, and loopholes within the federal background check system have allowed millions of people to obtain guns without going through the proper vetting process.
To be clear, gun violence is an epidemic that has taken too many lives, both Illinois and nationwide. We, as students, understand firsthand the fear that kids feel when walking into school every day, not knowing whether or not it's gonna be our school on the news that night. March 2020 was the first month without a school shooting in the U.S. since 2002, and that is only due to the pandemic school closures. After years of thoughts and prayers, students nationwide are stepping up and demanding that their lawmakers implement safer gun legislation, just because we're tired of lack of action from our leaders, and we realize that it's pretty much on us if we want real change to happen.
Speaking of, June 4th is National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and the following weekend is Wear Orange, a period dedicated to those who have been affected by gun violence. Cities across the country have committed to honoring survivors and victims, and our group has partnered with the Moms Demand Action Oneeka Group to host an event to recognize the day. We will be chalking a mural on Wilson Street near Nutria and Oneeka and hosting a virtual 5K, and we strongly encourage all of those who feel passionate about the cause of gun violence prevention to join us. This is an ongoing fight, and there are multiple laws, both in the Illinois and federal congresses that are waiting to be passed. The Biden administration has worked to close some of the loopholes, but there's much to do. As an organization, we're not trying to take guns away. We just want common sense gun laws to be put in place to make our communities safer places.
If any one of you feels motivated to join in on the fight, please reach out to us, and thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us tonight, and we really hope that you guys will all honor June 4th and take time out of your day to listen to victims of gun violence.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Ms. Miller and Ms. Richards for speaking up and their advocacy efforts on this. You both did a fantastic job tonight, and it was very compelling. We need more young people, more young adults in our community and our country advocating for issues that they believe in. Gun violence prevention is an issue that is important to me, our village board, and I believe our community, based on discussions our Public Safety Committee had just a couple of years ago. To bring attention to the importance and necessity of gun safety, the village's communication efforts during the week of May 31st to June 4th will include tips on gun safety and publicize the programs from our police department that they have in place to help protect against accidental and intentional gun violence. These programs include providing gun safety locks free of charge and temporary firearm storage for residents. We will make sure to educate the community on the opportunities available to them to practice gun safety, not just on National Gun Violence Awareness Day, June 4th, but throughout the year. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. As described on the agenda, items which are routine business that are normally not debated by the village board are placed on the consent agenda. All items beginning with the three on the consent agenda tonight are on the consent agenda. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of the items 3.1 through items 3.2.3. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item is not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and it will not be discussed. So let me begin by asking if there is any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. People who are watching on YouTube Live should now submit their requests. And if there are individuals who have connected via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda, we will ask people to identify themselves now.
This is Mark Wiremueller. I mentioned in my public comment removing that one item.
Okay.
Pertaining to extending the disaster proclamation or the emergency order, I don't have the wording right in front of me because I'm on my phone.
Yes.
Is that on the consent agenda?
I'm looking for that right now.
It's under the administrative part?
I'm sorry, President Plunkett.
Okay, that is item...
3.17.
3.17. Okay, thank you, Mr. Wiremueller. That will be, when we touch on the Administration Committee consent agenda, then we will discuss that item. Any other members of the audience would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Would any trustees like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Trustee Kennedy?
I'd like to remove item 3.16, Introduction of Ordinance, Amending the Village Code Regarding Outdoor Restaurant Seating and Cooking License.
Okay, thank you. We will remove that and discuss that when we discuss the Administration Committee. Any other trustee like to remove an item? Trustee Jaya?
I'd like to remove item 3.20, Introduction of Ordinance Number 2021-0-24, Amending the Minimum Fines for Parking Violations for Certain Locations Within the Village.
Thank you. So we will remove that from the consent agenda and discuss that when we discuss our Municipal May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda minus those three items that we are removing for now? So moved. Trustee Dodd, a second?
Second.
Trustee Shepherd, I believe. And then, could the clerk please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Trustee Jaya.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Shepherd.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
And President Plunkett.
Aye. The motion carries. The consent agenda has been adopted. If you are here for an item on the consent agenda, it has been approved. To clarify for the people who are watching tonight, all of the items beginning with the three have been approved, in this case, 3.3 to 3.7. There will be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the consent agenda save for the three that we held, so you are free to log off or hang up, but of course, you're more than welcome to stay and watch the rest of the meeting. Item four is Reports of Officers. I believe we will start with a report from our village manager, Mr. Brayman.
Thank you, President Plunkett. I have three items to report on this evening. The first is to inform the community that the village will be hosting a Memorial Day observance ceremony this coming Monday at 11:00 a.m. outside of Village Hall. Historically, this event was put on by the Wilmette American Legion that was located in 1925 Wilmette Avenue. As we know, that property was sold, and the Legion has consolidated with Morton Grove, so they are not hosting the event this year. We are working in partnership with them to put that event on, and we would invite members of the board and the community to that ceremony on Monday at 11:00 a.m. Secondly, we want to remind the community of the village's leaf blower prohibition that is now in effect for the remainder of the summer. New this year, we are taking a more proactive enforcement approach to ensure that we are properly enforcing our ordinance and reducing the noise and air pollution that those devices cause, and you will find additional information and educational materials on our website and in our social media. Lastly, as President Plunkett had mentioned at the outset of our meeting, we are in process of transitioning back to full in-person meetings. Back in April, we had determined a plan forward based on vaccine availability and mask requirements in our community. With the Governor and CDC's new guidance on masking, that issue has been addressed, and vaccinated individuals, which include all members of the board and staff that attended the meetings, do no longer have to wear masks in indoor settings. However, up until May 5th, there were still challenges for members of our community to schedule a vaccine appointment and receive their first dose. And recognizing that it takes five weeks from the date of that first dose, we identified June 9th as the first meeting where we could comfortably ask residents to come in person and join us for a meeting, should they have a petition or an application on the agenda, or should they object to a petition or application on the agenda. That date coincides with the Governor's Plan return to Phase 5, which is general normal capacity and operations for all businesses and governmental entities, on June 11th. So our intent would be that all boards and commissions and committees of the board and the village board return to in-person meetings beginning on June 11th. Should anything change in that regard, we will be sure to communicate that to the board and to the community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there a report from our Corporation Council, Mr. Stein?
I have no report, Madam President.
Item five is the report of the Liquor Control Commissioner, and there's no report tonight. So we will move on to item six, which is our Standing Committee reports. The first up is the Land Use Committee. Trustee Barrow?
Thank you, President Plunkett. Tonight, we have item 6.11, which is a presentation regarding business development in the village. I believe I'll turn this over to our village manager, who will begin that presentation.
All right, thank you, Trustee Barrow. So we're really excited to make this presentation tonight. This is the first time I recall that we've given such an update to the board and to the community, and it's something that we want to do more regularly moving forward. Lucas Severson, our Business Development Coordinator, is going to walk us through the presentation. With economic development updates, there's a lot of good information for us to share. There's also some information that we are not able to share with the community at this time at the request of prospective business owners or property owners due to ongoing negotiations. So if there are questions we're unable to answer, Lucas will state as such, and when the time is appropriate, we'll follow up with the board and the community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lucas. He'll share his screen, and trustees are, as always, welcome to interject with questions as we move forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barrow. Okay. Well, first off, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity presented this evening. For those of you who don't know me, Lucas Severson, Business Development Coordinator for the Village of Wilmette. I've been with the village since 2003, and been in my current role for a majority of that period. So I have a lot of experience working with our business community, working in commercial development, design review, and have been working, large in part, with our commercial properties. Tonight, just want to give you an update on a few business development-related items. First one, the vacancy rates in the village and the health of our business districts. Secondly, the new businesses in process in the village, which there's quite a few, so that'll be exciting to talk about. And thirdly, give you some more detail and background for some of our business districts as we talk about the new businesses opening and current vacancies and current opportunities. And then lastly, finishing up with some of the initiatives that the village is dealing with this community as well as the promotions. Starting off with this table, this is showing each commercial business district in the Village of Wilmette, with the corresponding number of storefronts, the percent makeup of our commercial areas, vacancies in those districts, and then the resulting vacancy rate. You'll note... with the corresponding number of storefronts, the percent makeup of our commercial areas, vacancies in those districts, and then the resulting vacancy rate. You'll note, and it was mentioned in my memo, that both Lake and Skokie and the Green Bay Road areas do have particularly high vacancies currently at 19%. One thing to point and keep in mind, when we're looking at these subareas, because there are so few properties in these subareas, 54 and 31 respectively for those two, just an increase of two to three vacancies really increases that percentage. So want to just point that out and keep that in mind. It's easier when we're talking about the entire village and the vacancy rate of the entire village to get a better idea of the health, although these individual vacancies for each district are indicators. In 2020, the village saw only 15 new business openings due to the pandemic compared to our annual average of 30 since 2015. And in the next slide, I'll be able to discuss this in more detail. But this is really the reason that I feel, as opposed to business closings, that's increased our vacancy rate. So you'll, I think, driving throughout the village, you can see more vacancies than you did previously. Large in part, that's due to a lack of openings rather than things closings. And you'll see that in the next slide. Two things to highlight is our Menon Square District, which has actually increased their vacancies. So they're currently at 5% vacancy, albeit a small district. But I think this is, given struggles of that, that's a whole, it's really positive to see. And I'll again go in more detail as I continue the presentation.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I say, before we move on from this slide, can you just note the improvement in the vacancy rate since January? As we're moving out of the COVID kind of stall on business openings and what that's done to our rate?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point. And with all the closings, in January and February of this year, we reached up to almost 12% vacancy rate. And that's the highest vacancy rate I've seen and that we've been tracking since we've been tracking. So the idea that it's already dropped to 9.9%, we're not even out of the pandemic yet, I think speaks positively to our potential rebound. Throughout the pandemic, the village center has remained fairly steady. It's typically our best performing commercial district. It's our central business district, and this includes also the area west of Green Bay Road. So that 600 block of Green Bay Road with the new M&amp;R development is Imperial Motors going all the way up to Lake Avenue. This slide is, like I said, showing the business openings and closings since 2015. So you'll see it's been pretty steady since 2015, 2016, the number of openings and closings. We've had pretty consistent openings year to year, except for 2017, which is just kind of an anomaly. We had very little movement, either closings or openings. But you'll see in 2020 over here, we had relatively average number of closings, but the real impact is this 15, only 15 new businesses opened during the pandemic, which is something that you would expect, but just goes to show that the lack of openings as opposed to closings, I think, is the biggest change that we saw. And this separation gap between the 41 and 15 is really the reason why our vacancies are where they are. But as Mike pointed out, that's already been, that's already going down from our peak. So we're at 9.9%. We've already had a few businesses leases signed, so that's actually going to drop a little bit lower at the end of the month when we do our final reporting. Now onto the positives of the presentation, our new businesses. So since, I would say, late February, the activity of leasing, the amount of calls I've been getting, the amount of work, working with new businesses getting open is probably as much as I've ever seen it while at the village of Wommet. So I think there's a lot of pent-up, you know, demand for businesses wanting to open, looking for that right time, realizing opportunities during the pandemic. And so we're seeing a lot of activity. One of the spaces that was brought up earlier, Baker Square, which has been a real key piece of property in the village that's been vacant. It's a big site, it's a restaurant site, and fortunately, the Murray Brothers, as part of their old seed, acquired the property in March, and they're working on conceptual plans for that space. It's a big site, there's a lot of opportunity to, you know, what they could do. And so potentially, they could reuse the building as is. Potentially, it might make more sense to redevelop the building. So that's something they're still working on in earnest, and we're in pretty close contact with their broker on a weekly basis just to get updates. But that's where they are right now. One of the businesses that was kind of amazing, when you think about the pandemic and all the closures, that there's businesses wanting to open during the pandemic, and Rosati's was one of those businesses. They're, they've been working to open a location at Plaza Lago in the former Fanning Mae space. The amount of investment they're needing to make in the space is quite significant. You're taking a space that was a retail space, and any restaurant buildout is expensive, especially when you're starting from scratch. So they're making a significant investment at a time when you have a lot of business closures throughout the country. So that's positive. Central Station Coffee and Tea is something that's opening near downtown in the former Rock House space. They are getting very close to opening, and if you haven't been down in Village Center recently, I would highly suggest to you, take a look. They did an outstanding job. They're nearing construction, but it looks really great, and we're really excited for that to open. They've stated they're going to try for a soft opening June 3rd, so it's going to be very soon. So that'll be exciting for our village center. Another Village Center restaurant opening, The Pit and Tap. The owners of The Pit and Tap purchased Nick's Neighborhood Bar and Grill late last year, and they've been in the process of doing, while Nick's was a great space already, it was built out for a restaurant. Because of their concept, they're making, again, some significant improvements to the space. They had to structurally reinforce both the first floor and the basement to get in their smoker, which is about the size of a walking cooler. So that was a pretty big feat that they had to do. But they're looking to open, I would say, early summer at this point. Ballyhoo Hospitality, you might wonder what that is. This is the restaurant group behind Sophia Steak, and one of their partners, Ryan O'Donnell, signed the lease at the former Kira Sushi spot on Greenleaf, and as well as the space next to that. And their concept is for a diner as well as an adjacent bakery. So there'll be a diner, and then next to that, a separate space will be Associated Bakery. So that's a real, really cool concept. It's, we haven't received any plans at this point, so I don't have a lot of information to share, but there is a lease signed, so it is something that's moving forward. Also with the pandemic, we had some new concepts that were created. The local food hall is a concept that started in the Bay Area, and they're expanding to the Chicago market. They've got a few locations also opening in the near future in the suburbs as well as the city of Chicago. So this space is, will be occupying the former subway on Green Bay Road. They've got their approvals a while ago, and actually had their rough inspections tomorrow. So they're moving right along, and we expect them to be opening in the next, I'd say, month and a half to two months.
Lucas, before we move on from the restaurants, I want to interject on the Baker Square one. I think that's a great example in that not all vacancies are created equal, and sometimes an extended vacancy is actually in the village's best interest to make sure we get what's best for the community. So at this site, there was a lot of contact and a lot of pressure, frankly, from the previous property owner to build either a two-story medical office space or a drive-through that really would have been adverse to the neighbors that abut that property. And at the same time, we knew there was significant interest from full-service restaurants such as the Murray Brothers. So sometimes you'll see vacancies out there, and folks will wonder why it's taking so long. And part of that is, we want to make sure we get the right use at the right site that's in the best interest of the community, and that's a great example of that. So, sorry, Lucas, for interjecting there.
No, no, that's a great point to bring up. It's definitely, it's hard to sit, it's hard to watch properties sit, but you're right. They also provide opportunity. Some of the other businesses that are in the process, we have several studios. Stride is a business that recently opened in Plaza Lago, right in between where Rosati's is going and Starbucks. That is like a treadmill training class. And they actually got approval to open or to start construction in January of 2020, which is kind of a bad time for, obviously, a workout place. They were able to work with their landlord at Plaza Lago, put their lease on hold, and decided to start with construction late last year. So that's something that slowed down because of the pandemic, but ultimately continued. Optima Fitness Formula is a place on Green Bay Road at 123 Green Bay Road, where the former Kurt Sophia Piano Building is. The building was built specifically for a piano store. So the idea of being able to just reoccupy that with any use is going to be difficult. So the property owner has been able to subdivide the first floor. They've got another user already. This will be their second user, and they have one vacancy remaining. Actors Training Studio actually is doing, you might notice, ATC, or, sorry, Actors Training Center. They actually did really well during the pandemic and are expanding into the storefront next to them. So they were at the zoning board already, and they'll be going to the village board for special use approval next month. The Taekwondo Studio is also in the Greenleaf Building where the diner concept is going. That will require special use. That'll be on the zoning board's next agenda for overview. And Crystal's Body Shop is a personal training studio that actually started out of a residence garage, and she got to the point where she was able to open an actual storefront location. And this is at 1225 Green Bay Road. Again, another long-term vacancy that had been available for years. And now we're seeing a lot of these spaces get new stuff, which is really promising. Retail is tough in any environment, but especially right now. So it's really, it's really cool to see retailers wanting to open in this environment. Luigi's Dress Shop is, some of the members of the Jewish Area Committee will be familiar because they just reviewed it recently. But this is a concept where it's essentially craft cocktails made to go and for delivery. This is by one of our existing Wommet businesses, business owners, Blair Cook, who owns Alphany, which is just down the street from where they're wanting to open this location. That did get a positive review at the Jewish Area Committee for their liquor license. However, it did receive a negative recommendation at the most recent zoning board meeting at a 3 to 2 vote. So not unanimously negative, but unfortunately, they didn't get four votes for it to be a positive recommendation. So that will be going to the village board for their special use as a negative recommendation. And that will be, I believe, the next board meeting for review. The Wommet Wine Cellar is a space in our downtown. Unfortunately, it was made vacant due to the pandemic. Fortunately, there's another wine shop that has expressed interest, and we're fairly confident they're going to be moving forward with that. One of the, I'll say hurdles, is they will need to get an amended amendment to the liquor code. Currently, the wine shops in Wommet are allowed to sell wine and beer, but not spirits. So they, the owners of this potential wine shop have another location in Andersonville in the city. Their concept is to have a small selection of spirits, and so that will require review by the Jewish Area Committee. They have not yet submitted a formal application, but we expect that to be in the near future. Also, a couple service businesses in process, including a dental studio of Wommet at Menon Square, Natural Holistic Clinic on Ridge, and Beacon Financial also in that Menon Square district. Going into a little more detail of our downtown. Downtown, otherwise known as Village Center, zoning district is our central business district, and traditionally, the best mix of restaurant, retail, service office, and residential uses. So it's really combining all these uses in a really great environment, which has a lot of vitality. So you don't always just need to have retail and restaurants. You can throw in service businesses, office businesses, residential uses, and it can all work. And that's how our Village Center zoning district is designed. So this district is our, includes the traditional downtown that a lot of people think of, but it also expands west of Green Bay Road. So it includes those properties like the 600 block of Green Bay Road, Imperial Motors, going all the way up to Lake Avenue. So when you, when you talk about the vacancy rate in Village Center being 7%, and to be, to be at 7% is not a bad vacancy rate. That's pretty healthy if you're, you know, for a typical city. However, there are some vacancies in the 600 block, which we know there's a reason why those properties are vacant. You know, the property owner is kind of figuring out at this point what they want to do with the property. And so we don't foresee that property being, those spaces being leased in the near future until they determine that. Also, Village Center includes Imperial Motors, and we know that errands who own Imperial Motors, you know, have had their own interest, but they also have the village's interest in mind. So they could have leased the property at this point to another user. There's been a ton of interest in the space, both from tenants just reusing the existing space all the way to redeveloping the property. We've seen, we've talked to many, many potential users and developers, but they're really holding out for, as Mike said, you know, the right user to give it the right fit. And we're hopeful, I might even say, you know, confident that they're going to be able to announce something soon, but that at this point is something that we just can't discuss at this point. But there is a lot of positive, even though that property has been vacant for a relatively long time. But it is a unique piece of property, it's a large piece of property. So finding the right user, you know, takes time. Our Village Center continues to be popular for restaurants, as I discussed earlier. Also, the Latin Lassie space was recently purchased, and we've reached out to the new owner. We have not yet. And we've reached out to the new owner. We have not yet made contact. But in talking to the broker for the property, we understand it is their intention to fill that space with at least a portion of it with a restaurant use. So that is positive. The new streetscape and the opportunity for, you know, you've got Veterans Park right there. It's a really, it's a really great space for a restaurant. So we really are hopeful to get a really good user of that space. We're also seeing a lot of continued retail interest. We've got some new businesses that have opened recently, also in the recent past, including Bella Coast Jewelers. Cher, which actually opened, let's say, four or five years ago in the second story of the Village Center, and had just grown in popularity. And now they have a storefront, and then they decided to open the sister business Shaq. So they're really doing well at a time when local retail is really difficult. So we've really found great users to fill that space. We're really fortunate for that. Moving on to Ridge Road. The Ridge Road Commercial District that we typically speak of actually consists of two separate zoning districts. There's in our district, which is at Lake in Ridge. And that's where Bridgeview Grill is, St. Joe's, and the former Treasure Island space. And then south of that is another Ridge Road Commercial District at Woolnet in Ridge. So those are two districts that we kind of talk about them, because they're so close in proximity and similar in nature. While there has been the closure of Treasure Island Antique Mall in recent history, which have been significant losses. There is a relatively low turnover in those businesses. The rents are relatively low. You've got the businesses that are in there have been there for a long time. So it's great to have those businesses, which are, you know, very stable and, you know, able to provide some stability to that district. There is a new leasing agent for the Treasure Island space. And I actually just spoke to her today. She's with Jones Langasal, who's a company very capable of leasing the property. However, the property is going to be very difficult to lease, to be honest. It's older in nature. It's 15,000 square feet. There's not a lot of 15,000 square foot users out there. Certainly, there are smaller grocery stores, and it would be great to fill that space with a grocery store. But as soon as Treasure Island announced their closing, we had reached out to many grocery stores, both in the local area and in Chicago. And for a couple of reasons, they just were not interested in that location. One, the amount of investment needed to make the space into something that would be usable for their concepts was just prohibitive. Also, the parking is not great for a successful grocery store. Its location kind of not really on an arterial, but kind of in between Green Bay Road and Skokie Boulevard, make it difficult. And also, just the, I already said, the condition of the space. So with those factors, we have not found a user. We had reached out. We were kind of hopeful when Bob Mariano has a new concept, Dom's Kitchen and Market. And their concept is 15,000 square feet, which you think, oh, hey, this is 15,000 square feet. They're doing 15,000 square feet. However, they're really focused right now on the city. They haven't opened their first location yet. It'll be opening in a couple of weeks on Halsted and Diversey. And their concept is to have like a local neighborhood market. So not unlike Treasure Island operated. However, they're really focused on the Chicago market at this time. They're going to be, once they open, they'll be fine-tuning their concept. They'll probably open, you know, maybe half a dozen, dozen locations in Chicago before moving into the suburban market. So realistically, we don't see that being something that is going to happen in the near future. You know, it could be three years before they have any openings in the suburbs. So at this point, you know, we've reached out to them, but it's not something that is really going to be in the near future. With that, it is a large piece of property, and we will be getting our comprehensive plan update later this summer. So Ridge Road will be a major focus in the comprehensive plan. We'll be looking at all commercial districts, but paying special attention to a few sub-districts or sub-area plans. And Ridge Road will be part of that. As I discussed earlier, Menon Square has actually been doing really well coming out of the pandemic. It's not well-known, but the northwest corner of Fourth and Linden, going from the corner all the way north to the alley, up here, and then all the way west to Alphany is actually one piece of property. And for the longest time, it had been owned by someone who, you know, did not live in the area, did not really put the effort into leasing the property, and frankly, didn't offer very good leases to tenants. And so I think there's a feeling that that particular property has lots of vacancies. Well, the new owner, which is the Bahai, who, as you know, is the Bahai Temple, also some office buildings on Central Street in Evanston and on Linden in Woolnet. They have invested interest in the neighborhood. And so they actually purchased that building a couple of years ago and have been putting a lot of, making a lot of investments in the building. Not things that you necessarily see, but there was a lot of deferred maintenance in the building. So putting on new roofs, you know, new plumbing, infrastructure-type things. So they've been doing a lot of that work and really doing a really good job at leasing the spaces. They just recently leased the space at the corner, 400 Linden. And that's a property that had been vacant over 10 years. And for that to be such a prominent corner location, and for that finally to get leased, I think is going to have, you know, really good overall, you know, impact for how people view the district, certainly reducing the number of vacancies. I think in overall, the new owner's been really positive for the area. They do have a few drawbacks being owned by the Bahai. There was a restaurant that was interested in opening there. But because they weren't to serve alcohol, that was an issue with the Bahai. They were not interested in allowing their tenant to sell alcohol. So that may change, but that was their feeling at the time and continues to be their thought. And again, like the Ridge Road quarter, this is going to be a major focus of our comprehensive plan update. It will be one of the sub-areas that we're working with at. I think the district has a lot of opportunity. We've always heard from people that this would be a great opportunity. Provides additional multifamily housing, being so close to the Linden CPA station. There's just a lot of opportunities, so it's definitely worth looking at, regardless of, you know, the votes of the vote vacancy rate. Green Bay Road, this again consists of two districts, one to the north and one to the south. The north being kind of where homers would be located. Most people would be familiar with that. And then to the south is the Jewel located up here, all the way down to Isabella. And most of these properties, especially on the north end of Green Bay Road, are very shallow, which does not provide a lot of room for onsite parking. And they're also immediately adjacent to residential. So any use that goes in there cannot be impactful to the residents. So that's going to be limiting for commercial use. Also, a lot of these spaces were made to be, were designed for their specific user, like Kurt Sevier Piano Place. So reconfiguring that is not an easy task. And that's, I feel that's one of the reasons why you see some longer-term vacancies at some of these properties. On the positive side, we are seeing, we've seen three leases signed over the past several months, these spaces. So we are seeing a reduction in those vacancies. Actually, one of the vacancies I just saw recently, the cleaner that had closed on Green Bay Road, will be opening. So that'll be further reducing the vacancies on Green Bay Road. Just an example of the difficulty to lease these spaces. There actually has been a lot of interest in the 101 Green Bay Road, which is just north of the Evanston border. But because of the depth of these lots, there's really no parking on site. And so for a restaurant to go in there, for most users to go in there, they're going to need some more parking. And because of Green Bay Road being parallel parking and just having the traffic of Green Bay Road, it's very difficult to find enough parking for a lot of these uses. So that just adds a layer of complexity to leasing these spaces. We had restaurants that we had been talking to. We had nut spas. We had retail uses. But the common denominator for all these was a lack of parking. So that's going to continue to be difficult for those businesses to be leased. Of recent note, the Four Firefly Restaurant Spot at 111 Green Bay Road. We've been contacted by the broker, and we understand that property is under contract. Not everyone would know that this property was owned by, not necessarily owned by the restaurant, but affiliated with the restaurant. So it was sort of owner-occupied, and the property did have quite a bit of debt. So the sale of this property was a little more complex than the new typical property. So I think that the biggest step is that this is, the property is being sold. I think that was, that's step one. Finding a tenant is going to be easier now that the property is sold. And while we haven't heard definitively, we have had indications that they're going to be, and might already have a user in that. So that's positive to hear. And then going out to Eden's Plaza and Westlake Plaza, these are properties where we're seeing a lot of vacancies right now. And certainly not for a lack of effort, and certainly not for lack of expertise. Both of these properties are owned, owned and operated, and leased by highly capable companies. It's just a very difficult market. Also, the spaces are, you've got spaces like Carson's, which is 160,000 square feet. And the idea of leasing a space that large is not easy, especially, you know, today, where you really don't have those types of anchor tenants of that size anymore. So the property owner continues to seek tenants to occupy that former Carson's space. And the village is working with a retail consultant, has been for a while, on helping the landlord track national retailer, and retailers to that center, including Target. We have spent a lot of time and effort creating a, I call it, a sales pitch to Target, making our best argument to why this area makes sense for them. And, you know, that's going to be, it's going to be a long process. These deals don't happen overnight. You know, we don't have any timeline for if and when something's going to move forward on that, especially for Target. But there's a lot of work going on in the background, both for the village and the property owner and the brokers. But it's likely, it's likely because the space, the box is 160,000 square feet, that they're going to have to either demolish the building or somehow divide it up into smaller tenants. There's just really no users that are looking for that size of a space. So that's going to be a longer-term project. On the shorter term, they're working with Starbucks to create an outlet building, which is basically straight east of the current Starbucks. And this is going to allow them the opportunity to have a drive-through, because that portion of the parking lot is relatively empty. Even with Carson's there, presents an opportunity for them to have a drive-through at that location. We know the Starbucks location, the drive-through at further west on Lake Avenue. So we've got some experience. We are requiring them to complete a parking and traffic study. So that's going to be really, probably the most important piece of that. So they're actively working on that. We haven't seen any formal plans. However, they have been before the Appearance Review Commission, just for a preliminary review. So they do have some comments from both village staff and the Appearance Review Commission as to, you know, what would be an acceptable configuration for that. So that is something that they're working on. We have not received formal applications yet at this point. On very recent note, we received an application from Torino Ramen, located in our downtown. And they are wanting to occupy two locations at Westlake Plaza, where the current subway is, and next to that, in the former, is a cupcake shop. They're looking to occupy two storefronts. And the reason for this is they've had great success during the pandemic with their carryout and delivery business. And it's really, they're really running out of capacity at their downtown location. And now that people are coming, you know, coming back to the restaurant, being able to sit inside, they want to maintain their ability to serve those customers who are, you know, requesting carryout and delivery while maintaining a certain atmosphere at their downtown location where it's primordial to sit down. So this is going to allow them to do that. They will need a special use permit, because it will be a carryout restaurant. And that's, carryout restaurants are a special use in all of our commercial districts. So they will be needing to apply for that. We hope to get them on the zoning board agenda in late July. So the Village Board should be seeing that sometime in August. So just another example of an existing Woolnet business expanding further, which is, I think, a great acknowledgement of just Woolnet being a great place for businesses. Anytime that you have an existing business wanting to expand further, it just speaks highly to the business environment.
Lucas, if I can jump in real quick. I know we're all anxious to see Eden's Plaza revitalized and disappointed in how long it's taking. And a large component of that is due to, you know, really national retailers halting expansions during the pandemic. But ultimately, we are really optimistic about the future of the center. We're regularly communicating with Newport. They have a lot of interest from national retailers. And they just need to work through the mechanics of their existing leases and possibly moving tenants around before they can really proceed. But we are confident that the ultimate outcome is going to be positive for the community.
Yeah, thank you. Also, similar to Eden's Plaza and Westlake Plaza, Plaza de Lago is owned by a professional shopping center owner. They're owned by Retail Properties of America, who owns many, many large-scale shopping centers throughout the country. They have offices They have offices in Oak Brook. So they do have a local component. But they're very well experienced in operating shopping centers. They also have, in addition to their in-house brokers, they do work with local brokers in the Chicago area for leasing spaces. So you know, you really can't ask for a more qualified owner. And I think a lot of the vacancies you're seeing is kind of carryover from both the previous owner and it's, it's a new owner who bought it in 2018, which wasn't a great time for retail tenants. A lot of businesses were closing. And then kind of once they were just getting their feet wet and understanding the local environment pandemic hit. And they had a few businesses open really right as the pandemic was hitting. Fortunately, those businesses stayed open. And they were able to continue their lease with Stride, who ultimately opened recently. And they got two leases with two restaurants. Cluckers Charcoal Chicken, who just opened recently, and Rosati's Pizza, who are currently under construction. So you know, there are more vacancies in that shopping center than we typically see. But I think it's definitely not for lack of effort and not for lack of expertise. They have a great team of people working on this. And also, some of the vacancies are due to they're moving tenants around. So they're within the center. So that's another component to the number of vacancies that they have. But I'm, as Mike said, he's confident that Eden's Plaza is going to be going in the right direction. You know, I think I'm confident that Plaza Lago is also going in the right direction. And just finally, want to go through some of the initiatives and promotions that the Village has been doing during the pandemic and moving forward. This is our first year of doing a Restaurant Month. So we had that this past April, sort of a week, we did a month. And it was a good response. We had 18 restaurants who came up with, you know, their own special menus for Restaurant Month. You know, for the first year during the pandemic, I think it was a great response. And we're definitely going to be doing this in the coming years. We've got, you know, we can see the light of the tunnel at the end of the tunnel for both construction and the pandemic. And I think it's getting a lot of people excited to start coming back to the downtown. So we're working on downtown ribbon cutting to sort of reintroduce people to the downtown, not only just getting out of the house, but you know, seeing the great streetscape work that's under construction that'll be completed soon. So we're going to take advantage of the new stage that was built on, or is being built on Village Hall Line to have a concert. We don't yet know the date of the concert. I think we would like to have all of the streetscape components complete, including lighting. Because that's really kind of a huge visual impact. So it's probably going to be sometime in July. And then with that, we'll be continuing the weekend band, acoustic bands performances on Fridays and Saturdays. I think that was, that was really popular last summer. It was relatively cost effective. And I had, I got a lot of comments from residents about that. So I think that's a no brainer that we continue that. And then another initiative that the Chamber and the Village is working on is the WOLMET gift card program. So to me, this is really exciting because out of any type of promotion or event, I get the most calls about, why don't we have a WOLMET gift card? And it makes sense. It's just the logistics of doing that with, you know, businesses that have different credit card processing systems, different employees, different training. There's a lot of logistics involved. And the Chamber was able to find a business that kind of cuts through all that mess and uses the existing credit card software, whatever that is, whatever the businesses have. And their software can work with that. So it's a really, it's really easy for the businesses. It's really easy for the people who purchase the cards. From the business standpoint, there's very little training needed. They really just, the customer gives them the number. They enter it just as though they would any credit card. So the level of, the barrier to entry is very well, should be very easy for the businesses to get on board. And we're already seeing a lot of people sign up for the program. They've got a good mix of merchants and restaurants and service businesses already signed up. So that's really promising. And this will be launching in June.
And Lucas, I think it's worth noting that we're, the Village is supporting this financially, which allows non-Chamber members to participate as well, which was important to us to make sure all businesses had an opportunity to participate in what Lucas said is a really exciting program.
Yeah, so, so yeah, we're excited to see how that's, you know, how that's going to be. With, especially during, you know, holiday season, this will be a great opportunity for residents to purchase, purchase something and know that their dollars are staying in the community. So another great, great use. With our WOLMETanomics program, that's something that we've had it for several years now. And we're going to be working to kind of give an update or refresh to that program. We're going to look into kind of the effectiveness of the program. You know, what the message is with our residents, is it working with our business community? So a little process of gathering some information to see kind of what do we need to do a tweak? Or do we need to just come up with a whole new concept? So that's something that we're working on as well. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I'll just start. Thank you, Lucas. And I think what is so evident from your descriptions of all these businesses is how connected you are to each and every business that comes to WOLMET. And it really kind of makes it feel like a small town, you know, and how involved the Community Development Department is in attracting these businesses. I get that question a lot from residents, you know, what are we doing to attract businesses? And I think, you know, your description of all of that shows that, you know, you have been involved in some manner, as have other members of Community Development, you know, in all the businesses that are coming here. So thank you for that very detailed presentation. And we're so excited to move forward, you know, in the coming months. Do any of the trustees have any questions?
Sure.
Very good update. Nice job, Lucas.
Thank you. Yeah, certainly, it's a lot of information, especially for the first update. I wanted to provide as much information as possible, knowing that it was going to be a long presentation. So thanks for sitting through all that.
Yeah, thank you. That was a great presentation. Lots of really useful information. And is our experience pretty similar with our neighbors in terms of the other communities? And if you had to benchmark or just anecdotally, pretty?
Yeah, so I keep in pretty close contact with my counterpart in Oneeka. I'm actually having lunch with them tomorrow. So we do share a lot of information. I feel like our, the makeup of our community, the makeup of our business districts are very similar. So it's helpful to have a good working relationship. So, yeah, we do share a lot of information. And I can't speak to kind of where they are with, are they seeing the same amount of uptick in leasing activity? I don't know that yet, but I'm sure I'll have more information for the next update.
Great. Thanks again. That was really helpful.
Lucas, I just had one question. First of all, this is great. And obviously, I spent some time talking to you today. So, but this is really thorough. I'm like, President, I almost made a mistake, but like President Plunkett said, you really have a great, deep knowledge of all these businesses. So I just wondered, what do we do? What do we do to promote a new business that opens? So for example, like Cluckers Kitchen or whatever, what's our process to kind of promote and get that out to the community? So people know that that store is opening? Or obviously, we're going to have a new coffee shop opening soon with the soft opening. I just don't, and it could be on social media and I'm not seeing it. I just wanted to kind of ask and let the community kind of hear what are the things we do to make sure member residents are, you know, here are these exciting new places that are opening?
Yeah, the best way, I mean, we've got two different things that we do, a different path we take. We do immediate notices and things like e-news that goes out weekly, also social media. So we will share it on our social media channels, the Village social media channel, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, assuming they're a Chamber member. And then in the, sort of in the long run, to make sure that we reach a wider audience in each of our communicators, we include all the new businesses that have opened. Also, depending if they're a Chamber member or not, Chamber does like a ribbon cutting and will get some press in the local publications. So that's another way that, that unfortunately hasn't been that effective during the pandemic. But we hope that's going to be something that we can promote more now that we're a little more set.
Awesome.
Any other questions? So thank you so much for that report. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Trustee Barrow, anything else on land use?
No, all other matters are on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Next up on our Standing Committee reports is the Finance Committee. Trustee Kennedy?
All items are on the consent agenda.
Okay, next up, Administration Committee, Trustee Dad. I believe there's two items off consent.
You?
You're on mute. Kathy?
Sorry, sorry about that. Yes, there are two items. The first item is item 3.16, which is Introduction of Ordinance 2021-0-20, Amending the Village Code for Outdoor Restaurant Dining and Cooking License. So I believe, Trustee Kennedy, do you want to, I don't know. Mr. Raymond, do you want me to turn it over to Trustee Kennedy? Or do you want to speak first? Or I know Trustee Kennedy pulled it from consent, so.
So President Plunkett, I think our standard procedure is to ask the trustee who removed the item to explain why. So I'll defer to Trustee Kennedy.
Perfect.
Okay, I'll try to keep this short because I know that the hour is getting late. I didn't pull it off because I'm opposed to it in any way. I pulled it off because I don't feel like I am knowledgeable enough about what's going on with this ordinance to have an opinion on it. And I don't want it to be, keep going down the road toward approval without filling in those knowledge gaps. And I'm also a little concerned that this is a kind of ordinance, since it is changing the Village Code in a significant way, that really deserves some public input. And that input hasn't really had a place to go up to now. And I don't even think this particular ordinance has been publicized at all. So nobody probably knows unless they're diligent enough to look at the consent agenda that there is such an ordinance and that there is a consideration of changing the process for approving outdoor dining facilities. And I think that it really needs a lot more public input before we can have an opinion. It seems that the proposed changes are premised on the assumption that our own procedure for approving these shelters and igloos and so forth, which is, I think, the biggest change that these proposed ordinance makes, that they're unduly burdensome and cumbersome in some way. And yet I don't have any sense of what communities around us are asking people to do to get approval. And I'd like to see what that is. I think that it would be nice to know whether this is just a reflexive kind of, we don't want regulation? Or is this really because we do have a more cumbersome process than most other people? And I also would like to know what the community thinks. Because while I think the community was very supportive of the restaurants during the pandemic and wanted them to be able to do as much as they could outside because they couldn't do things inside, it does impose a certain nuisance on people trying to use the sidewalks. And they may not feel quite so warm and fuzzy about it after indoor dining goes to full fruition, particularly the igloos and that sort of, those kinds of structures and tents, which do interfere more with the movement on the sidewalks. And that frankly, a lot of people find very unattractive. So I'm a little concerned that we need more public input on that aspect of it. And right now, without the changes made by the proposed ordinance, those kinds of temporary use permits would get a public hearing before the board. And they would require board approval in order to pass. So this is, putting this into the administrative hands of the administration alone means that there would be no public input and no board input before approval of these tents and shelters and so forth. I'm also a little perplexed about sort of the intersection of different sections of our Village Code. So as we all know, because we've read the minutes of the Appearance Review Commission, they spend countless hours worrying about the paint color and the types of materials and the types of windows and the signage and the awnings and the landscaping and the lighting fixtures. And they spend a lot of this time so that what is a result of their process is an aesthetically pleasing building that is consistent with other businesses in the area. And plopping these big temporary facilities in front so that you don't see any of their good work, it strikes me as a little, makes me a little bit uncomfortable. So I just don't know how we want to balance our concern for aesthetics, which the Appearance Review Commission is so careful with right now, with having these things approved without any consideration of the aesthetics or how it works with other businesses and so forth. So it would be my strong preference to not consider this for adoption in two weeks, but to spend more time filling in the blanks, whether that's true through a process with one of the Village Committees and I don't, Village Board Committees. And I frankly don't know which one is most appropriate. I would leave that up to President Plunkett. But it would be nice to develop a better record for why we need this and how much public support we have for changing the process. So we're looking June in the eyes right now. And in September, which is just three months away, we're going to be starting the budget process. So I don't see any point in waiting two weeks to start this process. That's why I'm bringing it up now on the introduction, rather than at the time that we're considering adoption. Because I think we need to get started if we're going to develop this record further before voting on it. So those are my reasons.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. So if I turn it over to Mr. Raymond, I think to kind of give an overview of this ordinance and perhaps we can break this ordinance up. I think the igloos and the greenhouses and the structures are one part of it. I think there is a part of the ordinance that the restaurants, just with their outdoor dining for the summer, I think we're anxious to have. So maybe we can discuss taking a portion of this and maybe discussing it in judiciary, I would think. You could make a suggestion. And then maybe there's a portion that we could vote on in two weeks. So, Mr. Raymond, if you have some ideas on how to frame this?
Sure. Thank you, President Plunkett. So stepping back for a moment in the genesis of this ordinance introduction and recommended change is that we received a lot of positive feedback from the restaurants, as well as residents and visitors to the community, about our approach to outdoor dining during the pandemic. Every attempt made to be as business friendly as we could during the pandemic was very well received throughout the community. The intent here was to proactively codify that business friendly approach and really look forward to a post-pandemic world where a lot of diners, you know, still may be uncomfortable going inside and want to eat outside, enjoy eating outside and are willing to do that. Or, you know, in the winter, have a little bit of unique dining experience in their own, you know, private igloo or greenhouse or whatever else a restaurant may decide to do. And we think, based on what we've seen in other communities, including Glenview, I'm sorry, Glencoe and the city of Chicago, that that type of concept is highly desired and is going to be here with us for a while. and is going to be here with us for a while now. So we wanted to make sure we were, we were on top of that and not responding later on in the year to those requests. So as President Plunkett alluded to, there are a couple of different components to the ordinance that's being introduced tonight. One is to that outdoor seating be permitted for the entire year. Right now it's restricted and Jeff, I don't have it right in front of me, but it's sometime from May to, through September, I believe. But there is a period of time, especially early on in the spring, where in the past the village manager would go out to the restaurants and say, hey, it's warm this weekend, even though you're not allowed, go ahead and put out your tables. So I don't know how concerned we want to be about the timelines and letting that happen when the weather is nice still. The second component is allowing for expanded outdoor dining, not just in front of a restaurant's frontage. Uh, that was really effective last year and maximizing the number of tables that restaurants could have. And, and that's something that's permitted now in our local disaster declaration. Once that disaster, disaster deck is rescinded, which I believe we're going to be talking about later this evening, uh, there, there is going to be a time soon when that happens, we wouldn't be allowed to authorize that, uh, because it's not permitted in the code. So that's the intent of this is to allow that extended dining throughout this summer and then into seasons moving forward. The third, and I think what trustee Kennedy specifically mentioned the concern with was those, um, greenhouses and the igloos and the way the ordinance is drafted, this would permit those upon review by village staff and approval by the community, community development director at any time in the future moving forward. You know, I think, you know, based on a discussion I had with trustee Kennedy yesterday, there, there's a lot of value to drilling into that further and, and, you know, looking at the standards we want to set, whether it's from an apparent standpoint or a timing standpoint on when those can be out there. And that could be something that as President Plunkett suggested, the Judiciary Committee could look at from a licensing standpoint. It also addresses insurance requirements. We did have some additional agenda material go out this afternoon. Jeff's been working with a local restaurateur who's also an insurance broker to make sure these are appropriate requirements and also checking with our, our own insurer. And then just in terms of the internal site plan review process and how we're going about that. So depending on the direction the board would like to go tonight, we could defer the entire ordinance and refer it to, uh, the Judiciary Committee, or we can take out specific components such as that, the, the igloo slash greenhouse concept, just put that to committee and proceed with the other components of the ordinance for adoption at our next meeting.
As far as I'm concerned, it's really those structural elements that I think are the most controversial part of this. The, the extension of dining in front of adjacent businesses, I don't, I don't think that you're going to find much, I've never heard anybody complain about that. And I, and I'm not sure that there's a much aversion to outdoor dining at all. I think people really like it, but, but the structures are something that I think are somewhat controversial and, and something of a nuisance to some people. Most of the comments I got were from people who have strollers and, and find it very hard to navigate and that sidewalk isn't always quite as wide as it's supposed to be between those structures and the sidewalk, where the sidewalk ends. So I, I think that that's the component I'm concerned about. If you want to strip that out alone and send that to either the Judiciary Committee or land use or I don't know, this is, it's on the agenda, it's on the administration.
Next to our administration.
I don't know where it goes, but, um, I really do think the record needs to develop a little bit more about the structures and the tents and that sort of thing, so.
So do we have, um, maybe the trustees, I think that's a good idea, um, to parse out the, the structures to handle specifically in committee so then we can, you know, make sure that our restaurants have as much outdoor dining as they could have this summer and we, you know, we're not behind on that. So do we have a general consensus from the trustees to, to handle it that way?
Yeah, that's a really, it's a good way to split it. I think we should move forward with the other two and let's think some more, uh, about the other one.
Okay. So it looks like I've got nods from everybody and I'm not sure which committee this should go to.
That's why I put it to you.
I don't.
Honestly don't know.
But do we have to decide that tonight?
Yeah, so I, I think land use is going to be very busy, so we'll take them off the table. They've got a couple of items, but I, President Plunkett and I can chat and, and figure out the appropriate committee and we'll, we'll inform the board of our plan and our timeline, uh, moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Does that mean that we'll see an amended version of this introduced in two weeks?
So you'll, yes, absolutely. There will be an amended version removing the structural elements that we talked, that we talked about and going forward with the remaining elements of the ordinance. Essentially, this will be two ordinances, right? This will be this first round and then if something comes out of whatever committee, um, for more, for approval, there'll be a second ordinance doing a second set of amendments. I, I do not believe it's necessary to, to put it on for introduction again. It should be up for adoption. However, the, the board has always has the discretion to table a matter even further if, if there's still something that needs to be discussed.
Yeah, my preference would just be that it's, uh, split out and we are adopting the, the points that we're next week that are in two weeks that we're interested in because I'd hate to delay some of these things for the businesses another two weeks. I mean, our next meeting will be June 8th and, you know, it's likely to be nice and I think we want these, um, businesses to have the opportunity, have outdoor seating as, as much as they can, so, which is part of this ordinance.
No, I don't disagree. I, I, if we can do it split up so that they can continue outdoor dining, that's terrific.
Yeah, exactly. So what will happen is, like I said, I'll remove the structural components, the ordinance, the remaining elements of this ordinance will be up for adoption. And then there'll be a new ordinance that's going to be presented to committee and that will go through the introduction and adoption phase as a, you know, ordinance that we do a couple of months from now.
Is there, is there some way that we can publicize this so that, that, we usually only publicize in the, in the newsletter, items that are not on the consent agenda? They usually rarely mention anything on the consent agenda, so people don't get notice that, that something is being considered. Is there some way that we can get word out that we're, we're thinking about this, that there's ordinance under consideration?
Yes, we could certainly do that and we'll communicate that through our e-news and our social media. Uh, once we have a date set, uh, when we're going to have that discussion, we'll provide some background to the community.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Dodd, you want, moving on?
Okay, so then the next item is, um, item 3.17, which is adoption of resolution 2021-R24 extending the declaration of, of emergency affecting public health and wellbeing during the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. Um, I believe this was removed by resident, uh, Mr. Wyer Mueller. Is he still on the phone, um, and still with us?
Yes, and trustee Dodd, before that, Jeff, we should probably have a motion in a second before we begin discussion, correct? So trustee Dodd, that was a motion, right?
Okay, sorry. Yes, I, sorry about that. So I should make an emotion, um, to adopt resolution 2021-R24.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, we don't vote on that, correct? We just?
You, you will vote on this.
At the end, at the end.
At the end. Right now it's discussion and I believe we, Mr. Wyer Mueller, in our tradition would be the person that we would ask first as to why it was removed from consent.
Right. So Mr. Wyer Mueller, um, as we discussed in the, in the intro and Mr. Brayman discussed, we will be in person in just over two weeks. But I, I do want you to be able to briefly explain why you want to remove this and then I will probably, uh, put this to Mr. Brayman or Mr. Stein for, um, some explanation.
The smart wire more, did you want me to comment here?
Yes, you, you can, um, state why you wanted to take this off the agenda.
Okay. So specifically I have felt, and I've spoken at three of the four last meetings, that you guys are in violation of the Open Meetings Act, that we shouldn't even have done this. Uh, this whole idea that we're trying to get kids back in person, trying to get businesses open, they keep saying disaster. I don't feel like there's any disaster. We're coping with it. We're adjusting. People are wearing masks. People are getting vaccines. People are distancing. You guys are all at home on, on laptops. It's just, we need to set the tone by opening up and that's more my point. And to keep saying it's an emergency, I don't see any emergency here. I don't see a disaster. You've said disaster numerous times. We're not in a disaster. It's not a hurricane. It's not a flood. We have, uh, health issues here which we're adjusting to. And that's, that's more my point. And to say that we need to have meetings specifically is very hard for me to log on. And I'm not sure if I'm muted or unmuted. It's very hard. People cannot have a public meeting here. And you guys did, apparently I missed a meeting last week, but you did have a public meeting out where you swore, were sworn in outside. So it was safe last two weeks ago, but it's not safe now. So I don't know if you can do anything about this as, keep saying it's an emergency, but I don't feel it's an emergency. I was just at Valley Lodge, had a very nice dinner. Nobody felt like there was an emergency there. There was no disaster. So that's more my point. Do we have to, and if we did not vote on this tonight, you guys did not vote to extend the emergency declaration, what exactly would that mean? So I'll leave it at that. If, if you voted not to extend the disaster or emergency declaration, would that mean anything or, or, uh, I'll leave it at that and I'll mute myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brayman or Mr. Stein, would you like to respond?
Sure. I, I'll, I'll start and we'll keep this brief, uh, because I think this is a pretty straightforward resolution that the board's seen many times before. And as I acknowledged earlier on, we're certainly winding down in terms of the disaster declaration. And when it comes to the board at the next meeting, we've already discussed internally, it's going to include the ability for the village president to rescind it at any time as we'll be moving into phase five of Governor Pritchard's Restore Illinois Plan. But the purpose of the disaster deck is to allow and ensure the village complies with the state's Open Meetings Act in regards to remote meetings. While we continue to do so, uh, it ensures that we're able to enforce the governor's face covering requirements, uh, capacity requirements in businesses, uh, and the like. It also allows our restaurants, as we just discussed, to have that extended outdoor dining until a code change is completed and for the delivery of alcoholic beverages from restaurants to homes. That is also allowed only because of our disaster declaration at this time. I know that's something our Judiciary Committee just looked at and is recommending that we make permanent, but those are important components that are in the declaration that allow us to continue to operate as we see fit, uh, over the next few weeks. Jeff, anything to add? No, other than to answer, uh, residence question about what happens if you don't vote on it, then all those provisions essentially have been dissolved and nothing, uh, nothing that was, or things that are not in the village code could not be then achieved as Mr. Brayman explained, the extension of outdoor dining, even Mr. Brayman's ability to waive late fees that are otherwise, uh, would be imposed during this time. So there are many important things that are still in this emergency declaration and it is emergency declaration as defined by the state and defined by a state statute. That's why it's called that. And to, to continue it for, for another two weeks is, is obviously staff's recommendation. There, as Mr. Brayman said, there will be significant changes in the next declaration as the state's emergency, uh, or the state's phases start to go into back to normal, uh, normal capacities and things like that. So, uh, it is important to, to extend it at least this two more weeks and then, uh, readjust every, as we have been every two weeks.
Do any trustees have any comments to add?
No.
Then I guess any members of the public have any comments to add? Okay, so then I believe we are up for a vote on, uh, 317. Correct? So it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the resolution 2021-R24 extending the declaration of the emergency affecting the public health and wellbeing due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. Can the clerk please call the roll?
And President Plunkett, before we call the roll, I, I just want to make sure and check with Alex Artiega that there were no public comments on our YouTube live channel.
Thank you.
Correct, there were no comments.
All right, go ahead, Eric.
All right. Trustee Jaya? Trustee Sullivan?
Hi.
Trustee Shepherd?
Hi.
Trustee Dodd?
Hi.
Trustee Kennedy?
Hi.
Trustee Barrow?
Hi.
And President Plunkett.
Hi. The resolution has been adopted and we're, we're looking forward to eventually moving on from that. Next up is our Municipal Services Committee, trustee Sullivan.
We have one item that was pulled up consent, which is item 3.20, which I make a motion to introduce the ordinance number 2021-024, amending the minimum fines for parking violations for certain locations within the village, administrative adjudication, chapter two, oh boy, article whatever, and general parking regulations in chapter 14, article 10.
Is there a second?
Second. Seconded. So I would like to ask trustee Sullivan to be clear on.
And by the way, I am the only one accused by that other resident of being at home. I am not at home, so on my laptop, I would like to go home.
Oh. Trustee Jaya, you requested, um, that we pull this off consent, um, if you could give a brief explanation and then I will probably, um, have Mr. Brayman again kind of give an overview of the background of this ordinance.
Sure. And thank you for a minute of time on this. And for pulling off the consent agenda was really not at all an objection to the ordinance and the, uh, raising parking fines. I understand, I think I understand the thought behind that. But as part of the memo that we received in the packet, there was a lot of other information provided about, uh, some of the issues around parking around our beaches, some of the issues faced by residents, issues around public access to beaches and further steps that it looks like the village will be taking to explore these issues and provide additional solutions. And it seemed like rather than just pass this on consent, oh, I know it'll be up again in two weeks, this is a good opportunity to, like trustee Kennedy mentioned with the previous ordinance, to start to provide some information to the community. This is generally an area that is of great interest to the community around our beaches. And I think we are going to be looking for additional public input on some of these issues as we consider a parking study. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Brayman on this, but it just seemed like we might want to just spend a few minutes sort of talking about this and what's to come on this rather than just having it on consent agenda and not, and not exploring it a little bit in the board meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. So to, to clarify, as, as we just discussed, uh, the item before the board tonight for introduction and adoption in two weeks is simply on the fines. Other components that I'll talk about next are to come later. So, you know, over, over the past month or so, we've engaged with the residents in the 700 and 800 blocks of Michigan Avenue regarding what really are longstanding concerns and problems in their view regarding, uh, parking and, and traffic flow on those two blocks largely, well, due to their location proximity to Gilson Park and the beach, particularly over the summer months, uh, when the beach gets very crowded. This has been an issue, uh, that the staff has been working on with resident, these residents for actually more than 20 years. And we'll provide more of that background to the board when we bring a traffic study forward at a later date. But it's certainly in our view from a staff perspective and from the residents' perspective, an untenable situation in terms of the volume of traffic, the safety concerns, the conflicts between individuals looking to park, reverse on the street, pull into driveways, pull out of the exit of Gilson Park that really warrants a, a further discussion and review on, from the village. So as part of our discussions with the residents, what, what we really found is that our current, uh, parking restrictions, which aren't changing, uh, really are being violated on a regular basis. And this was confirmed in our discussions with the park district and our discussions with the police department. The reason being the fine amount of $40 really is not a disincentive for somebody who's spending a whole day at the beach and coming maybe from a ways away. And the, the point of increasing the fine to $100 and to very clearly state that on all of our signs is to discourage folks from parking illegally. The reason we have no parking signs in many of these areas is to prevent pedestrian and vehicle conflicts as cars pull out of the park or the park closes at 10:30 at night. That's when parking is no longer permitted on these blocks of Michigan Avenue. Uh, and often folks will just take that ticket, pay the $40 and go on their way. So we're hopeful and confident that with the increased fines and making that very clear to parkers that, uh, some of that, some of those violations will be reduced. So that's step one and that's the ordinance change that's before the board this evening and, and our next meeting. But in addition to that, there's other actions in our conversations with the residents that we feel we need to at least explore. Uh, a couple of them can be handled at the staff level. One is addressing, uh, the Michigan Avenue and Washington Avenue intersection where cars come out of Gilson Park, creating pedestrian and vehicle conflicts. There are no parking zones there to try to mitigate those conflicts. Those are often violated, uh, even with the increased fines, there's concern that individuals still park there. So we're exploring whether or not to install, install barriers there that would really truly prevent that parking. And we're going to do that in conjunction with the residents because those can be really unsightly. We're also, uh, reaching out to the CTA, uh, to see if they are willing to allow us to advertise via signage in these areas. via signage in these areas that their lot over at Fourth and Linden is open and available to parking for beachgoers. There was a request from the residents for us to shuttle folks from there or from the metro lot, that's not a business we're in or we're ever going to be in, but we could potentially advertise that lot. The CTA has sent that request to the real estate division, it's under review. Even if we get a yes on that prior to moving forward, we'll certainly be in communications with the park district and understanding the impacts of that advertising on their own lot or on the flow in the park in general. So we'll have to see where that one goes. And then lastly, we've never really done a traffic study for the problems that we know exist specifically in these two blocks that are most impacted by their access to the beach. So what we're recommending is staff, and we had a staff discussion with our police chief, our village engineer, director of engineering and public works, corporation counsel, and also included the park district executive director as we explored potential solutions. We felt really what we need to do is understand the problem, understand the potential solutions, the impacts of those solutions or mitigations, and we can only do that through a professional traffic study where we bring in a third-party consultant to look at that. Given the scope of the work that we've put together, we think that cost is likely to exceed the manager's purchasing authority, which is $25,000. If it does, then we would bring that back for village board approval. And in the interim, we'll provide a lot more background on the history of the complaints in this area, actions the village has previously taken to try to remedy the situation, which have not worked, and go from there. I think it's really important to communicate and we've communicated this clearly to the residents in those blocks. We fully intend to maintain public parking on these streets. The public, not just Willmet residents, but Willmet residents from all over the area, have the absolute right to park on a public street and access a park or a beach. So that is something that's very important in our review and will be considered by the consultants in the review. So as we move forward here, we want to be clear that what our expectations or what the residents' expectations should be and how far our study and potential limitations can go. So as we move forward, we'll be communicating with the park district throughout. If we proceed with the study, our consultant will interface with the park district's master plan consultant. They don't have a traffic engineer, they just have a planner. So we'll be reviewing those plans and our recommendations would adjust based on whatever the outcome of that concept is. So this is certainly going to be an effort in cooperation with the Willmet Park District, with the neighbors and with other engineering experts to try to get to a solution to make what is a difficult situation a little bit better for our residents.
Our question for Mr. Brayman?
Yes.
Do you have any sense whether the problem that we have today is a significant increase over some time in the past? And if so, do we think or does the park district think that it's the result of simply greater demand being placed upon the park, that simply more people are coming from wherever to use the park? Or is it perhaps due to a, I don't know, a lack of following of parking rules, of people simply being disinclined to follow the signage and the rules for parking? Do we have any sense of why this is the issue that it is right now?
So I think you hit on all of it. It's a little bit of everything and this goes back 20 years and we have some records in our files that we found where, you know, three police chiefs ago, we were communicating with these specific blocks on trying out different parking restrictions to try to address some of these concerns, but those didn't work, we rescinded that pilot program. And certainly over the past few years, not just last year because of the pandemic, but I think it's just kind of commonly accepted that people want to be outside more, they want to take advantage of the beach and the beauty we have at the lake. And Gilson Park is a much more attractive destination, you know, over the last five to 10 years than maybe it was previously. So I think it's all of that combined, but this has been a longstanding concern for these residents and, you know, we've tried to one-off find solutions, we haven't been able to do that and that's why we think it's appropriate to look at it a little bit more holistically in these specific blocks and try to find a solution that meets the needs of all users of the park and in that neighborhood.
And just as a follow-up question, if we are to increase the fines, will our police department have an increased amount of patrolling in that area and ticket writing?
Sure, we regularly patrol it already, so we have a beat specific to this area, a little bit extended. And then on most summer weekends, we detail a police officer to Gilson Park, given the crowds and the assistance that's needed by the park district staff there on a regular basis. So our enforcement has always been fairly proactive there and I don't see that changing. And hopefully with the increased fines and the notices, there's less need for enforcement because folks will then follow the law.
Any other questions? I appreciate that, you know, we're working in conjunction with the park district on this because as they work through their master plan, there's a lot of information that we can share. So I think we just, you know, I think that this parking increase is fairly simple and we just look forward to more information upcoming on some of the other measures we can take to try to make things a little bit better for the residents. Any other comments? Are there any members of the, is any members joined on Microsoft Teams that would like to make a comment? And Mr. Artiega, are there any comments from the village's YouTube Live channel?
No, there are no comments.
Okay. So I know this is an introduction to the ordinance, am I correct? Are we voting on this because we're, so we're not voting at all. So did I make a mistake on the last one where we voted? That was also an introduction.
No, you're right. Last one was a resolution, so you did, there's no introduction.
Okay.
An ordinance, so.
All right, so this one, we will, this is just an introduction and we'll be voting on this in two weeks.
Could I ask again that maybe we advertise this to community a little bit before that vote? So that, because I don't know that there's going to be an objection, but it'd be nice to at least tell people that we're making this change.
Yes, we could do similar to what we were planning to do on the other ordinance.
Thank you.
Trustee Dodd, anything else on the administration committee?
Municipal services.
I'm sorry.
All three other items were approved on consent.
Thank you. Trustee Jaya, the judiciary committee.
I'm off on my, sorry, I'm reading this wrong, but next up is public safety committee.
Trustee Shepherd?
No report.
And then we get to the judiciary committee standing in court. Trustee Jaya?
I'm still listening, so.
There are no reports from special committees, there's no new business, we are on to adjournment, I believe. I forgive all my little mistakes, I will certainly make more as the weeks come. May I have a move to adjourn, a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Trustee Jaya, may I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Dodd, ask the clerk to please call the roll on the motion to adjourn.
Trustee Jaya.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Shepherd.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
And President Plunkett.
Motion carries, thank you everybody, we are adjourned, have a good night.